And they have all the worst. Row call please.
Mr. Rayser?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Here.
Mayor Welch?
Here. Please stand for the opening prayer and [inaudible].
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we pray that you will guide us always. Satisfy the needs. That need to be met during this meeting. Strengthen us as we make tough decisions. We pray that we will be like a well-watered garden, like a spring whose waters never fail. Father, please guide us through this meeting in a productive way. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda, sir?
No, there is not.
There's no action needed for the additions or deletions. We'll move to approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the agenda, first and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. Awards and proclamations? We have none? We have a recognition of visitor. Mr. Harrison Taylor is about to speak with us again.
Yeah, Harrison Taylor, 525 North, Fourth Street. Good evening, everyone. I'm really looking forward to the Traffic Safety Commission meeting, which I'll be attending. But I wanted to talk to you briefly because I think I have a lot more details about the situation that's really going on, not only on my street, but all the streets west of Summit. Five years ago, before the stop signs were put onto the avenues, traffic was pretty sparse on my street. And there'd be an increase in traffic in the morning and the afternoon when parents are taking their kids to school and picking them up. And local traffic is no problem, and parents taking their kids to school and picking them up is no problem. The problem is through traffic, okay? If we take a look at Summit Avenue, okay? And when we get to Kansas, right, we have a choice. We can either turn and go to the light, or we can continue straight and then turn right. And the problem came when we put up those stop signs. It made those streets into through streets, and they became like freeways. Because why should I turn left, stop at a light, wait in line, and then drive 30 miles an hour down Summit? When I can turn right and go down one of those streets and drive 40, 50, you know, 60 miles an hour? And I'm not exaggerating. And that's what's happened. We've had just a huge increase of traffic, not only on Fourth Street, but on First, Second, Third, and Fifth. Sixth Street is dead as a doornail. Seventh Street is dead as a doornail. Eighth Street has always been, you know, a busy street. My street, Fourth Street, seems to have borne the brunt of it because it's the best quality street. It's the smoothest, and people pick up the most pace there, and they also choose that one. The problem is people going from Kansas all the way down to Chestnut. But they also come from Chestnut up to Kansas. So it's really, it's both ways.
Well, they have a stop sign at Maple.
They have a stop sign at Maple. But when you compare it to going at the stoplight on Summit, waiting in line, and then going 30 miles an hour, and then when we get to downtown, it's 20 miles an hour. There's only one stop sign there, so it's not enough.
So what do you think we need to do, then?
Well, most cities in America work perfectly well with unmarked intersections, okay? And if our city is not going to work with that, and I agree, it was hazardous, then we have no choice but to put stop signs on the streets as well as the avenues.
Okay.
And I think a lot of people aren't going to like that. I heard that that's the way it was 40 years ago or so. And people did complain about it, and that's why all the signs were removed. That's just what I've heard.
Have you talked to chief about doing a traffic study on that area?
I haven't talked to anyone, just you guys. I want to start at the top so that, you know, we're kind of on the same wavelength with this thing, or see if we can come to understanding. One stop sign on that street is not enough to deter people from taking a more major street.
So how many do you think are needed?
I would recommend putting them on every corner that you put the stop sign on the avenues. I don't see any other alternative.
Without information regarding traffic study, accidents available, speeding tickets? I think we need to be sure. And ask you to attend that meeting, I believe it's the ninth.
I know Andrew's already asked for his email, so I don't, I think, try to get involved in it.
I definitely plan on going. I don't see another alternative.
We take our recommendation from the chief and his studies and from that committee.
Okay.
So.
That's fine, I understand. But I want to present things at the top. We, these neighborhood streets have really become hazardous. I don't have kids. The people that do have kids are scared to death of the street. And there are kids trying to play basketball and such out there. I really don't see any alternative. If our city has problems with unmarked intersections, they do understand stop signs. And I see that as the only way to encourage people to go off of the residential streets and onto more through streets that are really part of the design.
More constant flowing streets.
Pardon?
More constant flowing streets.
Eighth Street is like that. Eighth Street, a lot of it doesn't even have sidewalks. It's just kind of a traffic street. Second, Second Street has kind of been a through street before I moved here. I feel kind of sad for the people on Second. But these residential streets are just not peaceful places to live since those signs have gone up on the avenues.
And this is steadily occurring every day?
Every day. I mean, one car goes, and there's another car coming.
Is this from Francis Willard School congestion?
Because there, before, there was an increase at those times of day, in the morning and the afternoon. And now, it's no different.
Okay.
I mean, one car goes by, there's another car stopping at Maple, ready to come down. It's just, it has really changed the dynamic of the neighborhood.
Okay. I appreciate you coming before us and giving us your concerns. I appreciate you being at the meeting on Friday at 10 o'clock. I'm also on that committee, and you can talk to me then, okay?
Super, I'll see you then.
Thank you.
Thanks much.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Taylor.
Let's see. We've heard the consent, isn't it? Oh, business. Got hold of public.
We got the consent.
I thought we did the consent.
Nope.
Consent agenda.
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as written.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second for the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Can I have a question first?
You certainly may go right ahead.
Interim Chief?
Yes.
The truck that the old skid unit is on?
Yes.
How old is that truck? I mean, is it a fairly new truck, or is it one of the ones that you have?
The truck is 2004. It's fine.
Okay.
Pickup's fine. It's the skid unit. What the deal is, normally we can rebuild the pumps generally, but the pump needs rebuilt. The skid unit's rusted out. The tank's got a hole in it. The hole needs replaced. It's just, it's 35 years old.
Well, you showed a picture of the skid. Is that the skid of the old one?
Yes.
Okay. I just kind of wondered. It is pretty rested, okay.
We got our money out of that, let me assure you.
So it's, okay, that's the only question I had.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Oh, business. We're going to hold a public hearing and consider a resolution authorized in the City of Arkansas City to apply for a community development block grant to mill and overlay North Summit Street from Kansas Avenue to Radio Lane. I'm going to open the public hearing now.
Okay. Good evening, mayor and commissioners. I want to give you a brief project overview before we open it up for public comments, and then I'll turn it over to Rosemary to guide you through all the actions that are needed tonight to advance this CDBG application. Unfortunately, Chris Minen, our architect, is not going to be able to be here tonight, but I will text him if you have any technical questions that I cannot answer. But I feel qualified to give you at least a decent overview of it. The section of roadway we're looking at is marked in red there. That's Summit Street from Kansas Avenue to Radio Lane. That was wrong, bud.
Like any of us would have not done.
That's a more drilled-in photo, or a cutaway of what it will look like as far as the cross streets that we're looking at, and then this is the best view I've ever seen here.
He'll listen.
So as you can see, it's predominantly a resurfacing project, so a mill and overlay of the existing road service, which is deteriorating quite a bit. That's all marked in yellow. The intersection approaches marked in blue will be done in concrete like we did on North Summit Street south of Kansas Avenue. And then the stretches of purple are all the gaps where we don't have sidewalk right now. So the proposal is to essentially connect all the existing sidewalk together so we will have one continuous paved path along at least the east side of Summit Street.
Yeah, Andrew, I got a question on that. You know, when we were out there on 15th Street, we used that space of cement, you know, from Andale?
That had a seal.
Yeah. But it won't be that kind of cement then?
That would be a technical question I'll have to ask Chris.
It'll just be asphalt?
Oh, it'll be asphalt, not cement, okay. You said cement.
The approaches are going to be concrete, though. The approaches.
Yeah, the approaches will be.
Okay, I understand that. You said, you mentioned cement, I just wanted, you know, I bet you can do.
Well, it'll be a cement base.
Yeah.
At the intersection like that.
Oh, are you talking about the super slurry?
Yeah.
No, it's not that process. It'd be a conventional mill and overlay. Yeah. This project would be bid out to contractors. So that's the gist of it. I mean, it's a pretty simple project from what I've heard, and it follows the pattern of the other projects we've done on Summit Street. As far as the funding side of things goes, we have submitted a cost share application to the state. That ended up being where we are accounting for what we offered to was 25% of the total construction cost, plus we have to pay all the incidentals. So on that estimate, it's all the charges at the bottom. That includes our design fees, preliminary engineering. There's not much right-of-way acquisition, but at those intersection approaches, it's going to chop some corners, so there'll be a little bit. But mostly, it's temporary easements and any utility relocation that may be necessary. Those costs are not eligible for the cost share matching, so that's on us. All told, if we weren't funded for CDBG and we do get the cost share, it'll put the city on the hook for about $360,000 of the project. So obviously, we would like to see that number reduced. That was always our intention. Hopefully, we'll be able to secure both pathways of funding. So all our focus now is firmly on CDBG and doing the best we can to put that application together.
And our funding will be going where, I mean, what the city has.
Predominantly, it'd be the federal fund exchange dollars, right, Mike?
Yes.
So when we get those in.
How much we got in that account right now? Do you know?
Well, we receive 90%. We received 223 some dollars this year.
Okay.
Usually, we got 47.5%, but the governor signed and KDOT secretary changed it from 75% to 90% in dollars, and we've received that this year.
Okay.
So we have, we have that 200 and some thousand dollars left to use?
Pardon me?
We have that amount of money left to use? 200, okay.
Yeah, so we're continuously updating cash projections. When we know on the F Street Bridge project whether or not that'll be funded, we'll amend that. If we hear back on cost share, we'll amend it. So we'll be constantly reprojecting this. Plus, you know, there's gas tax, and those things fluctuate. But we've put together conservative projections, so we feel pretty comfortable. It'll be tight, but the funds should be there. This project would not, as currently planned, let for construction until after the first of 2022. The schedule we submitted to KDOT proposed finalizing and finishing it up by July of '22. If we don't get cost share this round and we apply again in the spring, it'll just push that schedule back probably to the end of '22. So we still have a whole nother budget cycle before we would get to actually paying any of this money. So there's an opportunity to figure it out as we know on these grants. But like I said, our focus is now firmly on putting our best foot forth for CDBG and hopefully getting above that cut line because that would allow us then one of two options. And I talked to KDOT yesterday and confirmed this. Either we can reduce the amount that we're asking from them and keep the project as it stands, or we could potentially re-engineer it and go further north and do more mill and overlay, possibly as far as Walmart. That would be kind of up to them on how they want to stage that. But there's just a lot of moving pieces still with these two grant tracks, so. The project request ahead of you tonight, then, is for the CDBG to apply for $455,000 from Kansas Department of Commerce, with us being accountable for the remaining $455,000. Ideally, like I said, that will be covered at least 50% by the state through cost share if we can secure that funding. Do you have any questions about the project itself or the funding proposal?
I have one. One picture with the black dotted lines, you show you go through Kansas Avenue, a couple hundred feet, whatever, and on the yellow, you don't. Is the intersection going to be included in this of Summit and Kansas?
Good question. So the first diagram you're referencing was the scope of the trans systems traffic study that we did. So they went a little further south because they were counting the intersection. They were looking at turning radius movement. As this stands, could you scroll down just a little? Let me try to make it accurate. As this stands, they would stop paving just before reaching the intersection, but we would have the option to continue through and do the intersection if we wanted to. I believe on the estimate for the thermoplastic pavement markings, however, that he has new pavement markings all through the intersection, the turn lanes and all of that as well.
So.
So it wouldn't be resurfaced, it'd essentially be repainted.
So when was the last time we did a mill and overlay of the intersection itself? I know with Summit Street, we went to the intersection, didn't we? Or just a little bit?
South of there?
South of there?
Yes, that did not include the intersection.
Do we know? Have we looked at that?
I'm not entirely certain. I think with the Kansas Avenue resurfacing, I think that included at least a portion of it because there's some new concrete in there on some of those turn lanes. But as far as the direct middle of it, I do not know for sure, so.
Well, since we're in the, since going to be in that area, maybe we ought to consider going through the intersection if possible.
Well, and so there'll still be time. The CDBG process is like a whole year.
Okay.
Before we can even get to the point where we are allowed to proceed with the construction. So there will be some time to tweak on the engineering. If, for instance, bids come in really low, that's an opportunity to expand the scope. But I think we could definitely look at that. The trick with that intersection, of course, is going to be traffic control.
That's true.
And this is already, this is already going to be a tricky traffic control project because you cannot shut this street down. We'll have to go with the lane and do it in this phase.
If we could do it through the intersection, that would be good, too.
Yeah, I kind of like going, yeah, if we do that.
Since we're there.
And I think it would probably be, to our benefit, as a cost thing, instead of waiting 10 years down the line to do, what, East Kansas? So we can check on it.
Yeah, definitely. And I think he's built enough contingency into the estimate that we'd be covered even if this was the funding awarded.
I just talked to Chris, that's a concrete intersection. Kansas Summit is concrete.
It's all concrete?
Yes.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, and then we're good.
It's so dirty, it looks like.
I don't look down, I'm looking to see the cars that are coming at me.
Yeah.
I think the restriping will help a lot.
Okay, all right.
There is one little other aspect to that question, though, that I did want to bring up. If, there's still time between when this will actually happen, and there's still the debate about three lanes versus four lanes. We are choosing to not address that right now because no matter what, it's the same amount of pavement and basically the same amount of markings. But when we get into the engineering phase, that is something we'll have to determine. I'm hopeful that KDOT will kind of give us some recommendations. I know they're using trans systems to help score projects, so the people that have already kind of made that recommendation are involved with the project. But it'd be nice to have, what does KDOT want to see in this segment? And what do they think is appropriate before we make a final decision? If this were transitioned to a three-lane roadway, we would have to change the intersection because you'll have to change the turn lanes, the approaches, and probably, I think, even some of the signals. So.
But that's down the road.
Yeah, we don't have to make that decision tonight. And we may just decide to go keep it four-lane and not do any adjustments. But I think it'd be good to hear from the state on their opinion of the project. So either way, we'd be touching some of the intersection. I think he has, yeah, he has gone through Radio Lane and actually north to the North Walgreens Drive, and also east on Radio Lane past the Walgreens Drive. So we'll completely take care of the Radio Lane intersection, all but the portions that we already touched with the last project.
All right. Okay. On those sidewalks, are we going to repair some of the existing? Is that part of it, too, or just add connected?
Yeah, he's got a little bit in there for that. Some of that can probably be improved. There's also some spots that are not really up to what we'd like to see.
I mean, if we're going to make it, let's make it usable and not.
So there may be some sections that we can expand.
Yeah.
There may be some sections that we just need to replace wholesale. There's a lot of spots where it's paved, but it's not actually a sidewalk.
Yeah.
For instance, in front of Sonic. So we're going to have to look at those as we get a little deeper into it. But ideally, there will be one paved transit route the entire length, so we won't have people walking through the grass or jumping off the curb anymore. And I think there's a little bit of curb and gutter repair built into, depending on what the needs are.
So this is just step number one?
Yeah, so tonight, we're asking, we're in the public hearing. We will open it up for public comment. If anyone from the public has any other comments or other project suggestions, this will be the time to hear them. Assuming that there are not, then I would ask you to close the hearing, and Rosemary will guide you through the rest of the process. Thank you.
Any public wanting to make comment? Hearing no public wanting to wish to make comment. I'm going to close the hearing and have Rosemary come up.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Rosemary Saunders from Ranson Financial. Is what we have for you tonight is a couple resolutions that are part of the CDBG application for you to consider and hopefully approve so we can submit the application on October 30th of this month. Is the first one is Resolution Number, it's 3358, for authorizing the City of Arkansas City to apply for a community development block grant to mill and overlay North Summit Street from Kansas Avenue to Radio Lane.
You said 3358?
Yes, sir. So it'd be 2020-10-3358.
I move we authorize the City of Arkansas City to apply for the community development grant to mill and overlay North Summit Street from Kansas Avenue to Radio Lane, Resolution Number 2020-10-3358.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Okay.
Leslie, let me know when these are row called, okay?
Okay. The second resolution certifies legal authority to apply for the 2021 Kansas Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program from the Kansas Department of Commerce and authorizing Mayor Karen Welch to sign and submit such application. And that is Resolution Number 2020-10-3359.
Do I have action for this resolution?
I saw move that we authorize the Resolution 2020-10-3359.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second to authorize Resolution 2020-10-3359. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Okay. And the next resolution is assuring the Kansas Department of Commerce that funds will be continually provided for the operation and maintenance of said improvements to the Arkansas City Street system to be financed by the Kansas Department, by the Community Development Block Grant funds. And this is Resolution 2020-10-3360.
I'll make a motion that we approve a resolution assuring the Kansas Department of Commerce that funds will be continually provided for the operation and maintenance of improvements to the Arkansas City Street system to be financed with community development block grant funds. Second that.
Have a motion and a second for Resolution Number 2020-10-3360. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
And then, did you want me to cover the next one, Andrew?
Yes.
Okay. As part of the application, part of the scoring system is what they call pre-selection of professional services. And this is what Item C involves, which is a resolution authorizing the City of Arkansas City to enter into a contingent engineering design bidding and construction administration and inspection services contract with Smith &amp; Oakes, Inc. of Arkansas City for the community development block grant North Summit Street resurfacing project for an amount not to exceed $127,090. And it's Resolution Number 2020-10-3361.
Do you want to clarify? If we're not awarded the grant, we do not have a payment contract. That's only the event.
And there's where the word contingent comes into play. It does not become valid until the city has awarded the grant.
And what was that number again, 2020? Okay, I make a motion, we consider a resolution authorized in the City of Arkansas City to enter into a contingent engineering design bidding, construction administration, and inspection service contract with Smith &amp; Oakes Incorporated of Arkansas City for the community development block grant, CDBG North Summit Street resurfacing project for a amount not to exceed $127,090. The number 20, 20-10-3361.
There you go.
I'll second.
What?
I have a motion.
On we all second.
And I heard, I heard Canyon second that. Is all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
All right, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I was running fires as I called these.
I was looking for those numbers on my lap, on my iPad. Couldn't find them.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Leslie, I'll be in touch with you tomorrow? Okay, thank you.
Leslie, new business, please.
Consider first reading of an ordinance amending Arkansas City Municipal Code, Section 2-278, concerning city administrative departments and modifying municipal codes so reflect.
Oh, this is the picture line. This is the one where the lines.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. We are doing a reorganization of the administrative department, primarily regarding finance. And we have shown you a new organizational chart where we pointed out we missed it all, or I had missed a line. But with that comes several other changes. We have to change job descriptions, pay ordinance, organizational charts, that sort of thing. So, but what we need you to approve is the organizational structure, creating the finance division as a division of the city manager. creating the finance division as a division of the city manager department. We have also added a deputy city clerk position, changed some job titles for consistency sake because Jennifer's position is going to be called Finance Director slash Treasurer. And so, both being divisions of the city manager department, we just changed my title with your approval to Human Resources Director, so they match. That's really all the, the reason for that. We, I did also add in here to change the Environmental Services Superintendent, which is Rod Filo's position, from a thirty-four to a thirty-seven, to be consistent with the other department heads. I feel like, um, with the amount of responsibility that he has, all the certifications that that position requires, there's no reason why it shouldn't be up at a thirty-seven with the rest of the department heads. So, in doing these things, you will see a redlined version of the job titles from the pay ordinance. Anything that is in blue is new. Anything in green is simply a change, and anything in red is proposed for deletion. Immediately following that page, you will see just a clean version behind. There were no changes to the pay ranges. In making these organizational changes, we did need to update a couple of policies. And the first one would be the employee council, so that we refer to the appropriate departments and divisions, including job titles. The second one, of course, would be the organizational structure. And if you look through a few pages back, you will see the redlined version of the organizational structure, which we did just recently update. But this removes the finance department and makes it a division of the city manager department. And then we listed the IT division because Matt McSinger will, in this proposal, no longer report to the finance department, will, uh, will report directly to the city manager. Do you have any cha- uh, questions?
IT used to s- used to, uh, report directly to the city manager for a long time, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, when the city manager is gone, or, you know, on a vacation or something like that, is the city attorney is the next person in line, I mean?
Well, you know, um, Randy hasn't been gone.
No, I'm just saying.
But in, in the past, um, Nick would sometimes leave the city attorney, sometimes the police chief.
Uh-huh. So he has the option to do that then?
I believe so.
Okay, I, I didn't know, I mean, I just asked a silly question.
No, it's not a silly question.
Or he could just answer his phone.
Yeah, exactly.
No, he needs some time away.
See, poor Nick had to leave the country. So what do you?
Can I get one too?
Is this all one big motion?
No, you have to just separate since the item one, then we'll go on to two and break it apart if it's possible before you vote.
To get, leave the debate.
Oh my goodness.
Well, I'll move that, uh, we adopt first reading of an ordinance amending our city municipal code Section two dash two-seven-eight concerning city administrative departments and modifying municipal code to so reflect.
I'll second that.
I'm gonna motion and second.
You ready for roll call?
Says roll call.
Commissioner Eastman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gager?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Welch?
Yes. Number two.
Number two, consider first reading of an ordinance adopting the budgeted pay plan for twenty-twenty and repealing ordinance number two-zero-two-zero dash zero-three dash four-five-zero-eight.
I was gonna ask a question, and then, oh, it pops in my head. The finance treasurer, is it going to combine?
Yes.
Is that gonna be a dual responsibility, or is it just a name?
It is a dual responsibility in that, that individual will be in charge of the finance division and will act as the city treasurer.
Okay, I noticed that she's going to remain at thirty-four?
Yes.
Is that fair?
Well, the, um, the, the difference is that this position will not have as great of responsibility as Kathy did in that she's, won't be a CPA and that the city manager will be taking on quite a few of the responsibilities for the role as well. And we're also taking away some of the supervision.
She will be compensated greater than she is now.
Yeah.
Yeah, significantly.
Okay, okay, thank you. I move that we consider the first reading of ordinance adopting the budgeted pay plan for twenty-twenty and repealing ordinance number twenty-twenty dash zero-three four-five-zero-eight.
Second that.
Roll call.
Commissioner Eastman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gager?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Welch?
Yes.
And the third part, we consider personnel policy updates, employee council, and organizational structure.
Any questions regarding that one? Do we have a motion, action?
I'll, I'll make a motion.
I'll second the motion to approve the personal policy updates.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. This is a voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Thank you, you're so welcome, please come see us again.
I will. Okay, item four, special assessments, there'll be three parts to this, one for separate actions. First one is consider first reading of an ordinance levying special assessments for code enforcement activities for unpaid revenue charges.
Uh, Commissioners, Mayor, uh, for you is the, uh, charges that we have on the mowing of properties and noxious weed weeds and everything. And, uh, the total of it, pretty much self-explanatory, I guess. Does anybody have any questions on it?
Is, are there more this year than there were last couple of years because of?
So far as quantity is about the same.
About the same, okay.
But the amount is a little bit more, because it seems like there's, um, more labor involved on some of it. So that's why it's a little bit higher than it was last year.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Is this complaint driven?
No. Uh, it's complaint driven, and also too, if we drive by and we happen to see a residence that has tall grass that's out of compliant, we send them a letter, certified letter. They have ten days after they sign it to comply, if not, usually we'll go ahead and say, well, no, usually, we always send them another courtesy letter. They have ten days of, that twelve inches of grass can end up being twenty-four inches by the time we get to it. But if they don't comply, then we have no other option but to go ahead and do it.
Is there any physical contact made, I mean, do you try to?
If, if the residents are at the house when we go up there and look at it, we always go up and we, and we knock, yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
And then if they're not there, you find out already, she said a certified letter, I mean?
Yes, we always, whether they're there or not, uh, even after we talk to them, uh, after we talk to them, we'll give them usually ten days to go ahead and do it. If not, then we send them a certified letter.
So some of these.
How many, how many, uh, is there, how many repeats for all somebody, is it, a lot of these people do it? I mean, there's no mowing, you have to mow it every two, three weeks? There's quite a few of them that we have to have repeat on. But two, uh, once we mow it, we get it down to, you know, a couple inches. And then once it gets up to the twelve inches or thirteen inches, twelve inches by code, we usually wait until it's about thirteen, then we go ahead and we'll send them a, another courtesy letter.
I, I know we're not a social organization here, but I was just wondering, I know there's lots of people that would probably volunteer to help any of the elderly or the infirm.
Yeah, and that's perfectly fine, the only thing is, the city cannot get involved on that part of it because if we talk to the people about having them help mow, if they do it, then they have to have insurance through the city, bonding and everything else.
I see, I see, okay.
Uh, when I guess, do you ever let it get to twenty-four inches tall, have you?
The Johnson grass gets up.
Yeah, it gets taller than that.
Pictures.
But, uh, how many times do you have to mow it? If, if the Johnson gets, gets that, Johnson grass gets that tall?
Uh, well, usually like on Johnson grass, and which some of these lots do have a lot of Johnson grass in them, uh, we'll send a letter out, you know, uh, the first time, we want it to get around thirteen inches. And then, uh, like I said, they have ten days to comply. And by the time this, uh, the time limit is up, usually that Johnson grass is up to twenty-four, thirty inches, because it grows very quickly. Now, if they don't comply and we mow it, then what we do, uh, by, uh, code, we can go ahead and mow it back in, mow it once it hits the third, twelve or thirteen inch mark, no matter what. We don't have to get back with them and, and similar or anything by the regulations of the city.
Are these usually large lot that this happens in, or is it a home?
Uh, a lot of them are lots, I would say probably is fifty-fifty, lots and houses, both.
Yeah. Kind of hard to mow Johnson grass in the yard, person's yard.
Yeah, that's the problem, if they have a fence around it, well then that means, uh, you can't put a riding lawnmower in it.
Right.
So you end up having to weed it, and that takes time.
Okay, okay.
And once we approve this tonight, then, uh, will that go on their tax roll immediately? Or, or you send another letter, see if they'll pay it before it goes on the tax roll, or? Well, what we have to do by November, we issue all this stuff to this, uh, county. Yeah. And they'll go on a special assessments on the county's tax roll. Okay. So it'll be on their taxes. Yes, sir.
Okay, any more questions, comments?
I make a motion, we consider the first reading orders levying special assessments for the code enforcement activities for unpaid weed mowing charges.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second, Canyon was first. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Eastman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gager?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Welch?
Yes.
Part B, consider first reading of an ordinance levying special assessments for code enforcement activities for unpaid refuse abatement charges.
There is a change on this in addition. Uh, when we did this, we got it all put together, there is one, it was for a William Shank at eight twenty-eight South Summit Street. It was a seven hundred dollar assessment that we had on, and that wasn't put on prior. So the price would be thirteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars and thirty-three cents instead of the thirteen thousand, ninety-five dollars and thirty-three cents.
Okay.
So.
Go ahead.
I was gonna make the motion, consider first, uh, reading of ordinances levying special assessments for code enforcement activities for unpaid refuse abatement charges.
Second.
Having a motion and a second, now ready for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Eastman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gager?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Welch?
Yes.
And part C, consider for approval a certificate of special assessment for dangerous, dangerous structure demolition.
On these, on the dangerous structure dem- uh, demolitions that we did, uh, most of them we did with city crews and saved quite a bit of money doing it that way. Uh, there is a few of these, two of them, let's see, one, two, three, there's three of them. There were garage fires and garage that was falling apart that we had a demo, and those were done by city crews. Uh, one was a house fire that was done by city crews, and that's at eight thirteen South B Street. And then there's one at eight seventeen South A. That's, uh, the one that was in sanitary conditions beyond repair, we tore it down by city crews. The other ones were garages. And the one here, uh, at ten eleven South C Street, that one there, that had been demoed back in two thousand and sixteen, I believe. And that person paid quite a bit towards it, and they just stopped paying. That's why it's on the specials on that.
I move that, uh, we approve a certificate of special assessment for dangerous structure demolitions.
Second.
Having a motion and a second for special assessment for dangerous structure demolitions. All opposed in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Consider resolution authorizing the city to execute a professional services agreement with Larry R. Schwartz as city attorney.
Has our attorney looked at it?
Yeah, I heard that out.
You're gonna see, man, I was like, counsel, look at that.
I make a motion, we authorize the city of Ark Kansas City to execute a professional services agreement with Larry R. Schwartz as city attorney.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Larry. Get this, get this approved before he says, I want more. Appreciate, enjoy working with you.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay.
Next, I think, consider a resolution authorizing the city to execute a professional services agreement with Patrick T. Blatchford as medical director.
I would make the motion to consider the resolution authorizing the city of Ark City to execute a professional service agreement with Patrick T. Blatchford as medical director.
I'll second that.
Could I ask something? Uh, he's been supplying, um, the fire department with, uh, medical services?
Yes.
And? And we haven't done anything until now on that?
Nope.
Huh, okay.
They've overlooked for, uh, oh, how many years?
Well, he's, that's a pretty good guy to step in and do that.
Nine.
He is.
And we, and we need, I mean, you need to have it for this, so you have to have it for him to do it from.
He's highly qualified, well, he's highly knowledgeable and understanding, he can provide a service. He does a lot for us.
Yes, he does.
Is that?
And they, originally, he's, he has donated his services for a number of years. But now, the changes that the board has placed down are gonna require a lot more hours for him. He's also done a lot of training on his own with them and, uh, does all the oversight on that. And, but now they've made changes at the state level, which are gonna require a lot more of his time. So, I think this behooves us to, to do this for him.
I agree.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Question, Chief, on your budget, uh, uh, she's gonna include in that budget, but do you have room for that, I mean, or, for his sal- salary thing?
Yeah. Yes, we do, uh, for this year, uh, next year, I have that.
I say it's one of the senior best reports.
That's right, thank you.
Second, consider a resolution approving the coronavirus relief fund memorandum of agreement by and between the County of Cali, Kansas and the city of Ark Kansas City, Kansas.
Good evening again. Uh, this morning, I attended the Cali County Commission meeting in Winfield. They had to approve fourteen of these, one for every jurisdiction that has received reimbursement through the first round of the coronavirus relief fund, the CRF. So we need to do our part and match that signature in order to receive the nine thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents that we are entitled to, and money that we've already expended in our coronavirus response. Unfortunately, I did not get any more information regarding round two. We submitted six different grant applications totaling in excess of one hundred thousand dollars for new programs and equipment. They did approve a budget that they are passing on to their financial auditors for review, but Nick did not tell us exactly what was approved over those projects, and so we are waiting to hear more on that. Uh, but I did talk to Lucas Goff last week, and he implied that probably next Tuesday around that timeframe, they'll hear back from their auditors and their attorneys that have to review everything for the state and let us know then. So it is entirely probable that we will need to have some kind of special meeting next week to approve another one of these agreements for round two. Um, and the reason for the haste on that is that we have to spend every cent before the end of this year, otherwise we don't get to keep it. So, we'll need to immediately turn around and order all this equipment and start getting things installed that we proposed to do. I think we could probably plan tentatively to have a special call meeting during the next study session and just take care of it that day, as opposed to calling another night meeting. But we'll know more when we get, um, official information back from the county. Hopefully, we'll get all those funded. But this, like I said, this is for round one, this is just for the reimbursements, so just need the approval to, uh, move forward with that.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution approving a coronavirus relief fund memorandum of agreement by and between the County of Cali, Kansas and the city of Ark Kansas City, Kansas.
Second that.
I have a motion as second for the resolution approving the coronavirus relief fund memorandum. I have a motion as second for the resolution approving the coronavirus relief fund memorandum of agreement. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Thanks.
I'm just standing up here for updates.
Did you, did we miss something?
While, while you're standing there, uh, you wanna talk about how?
So I passed out a flyer, um, I think Commissioner Gager is kind of aware of some of this. Uh, the downtown merchants are starting to organize an event, um, the night of Saturday, October thirty-first, to do some kind of trick-or-treating for the kids. It doesn't involve them going into buildings and, you know, heightening the risk. So, uh, this is what I've been given so far, but I, I forwarded to the Chamber and Visit Arcane City. The other thing that I handed out, KDHE yesterday put out this five-page document with lots and lots of recommendations for how to trick-or-treat safely. They do not exactly recommend doing sort of this organized trunk-or-treat type event, but they also have several pages devoted to, if you're gonna do it, here's how to reduce the risk as much as possible. So we made sure they had that information, and then we would pass it on to the other organizers. Um, the city is not, you know, organizing this, but we're kind of supporting it. I believe there's also been a permit application that we're working through the process too. Also, I met today with the Cali P I O Working Group, and so we had some discussions. There's gonna be a lot of social media that we'll be pushing over the next few weeks on safe trick-or-treating practices in the time of COVID. Um, so that'll be coming from the Health Department, the Community Health Center in Winfield, uh, we'll probably push some of that. And, uh, there's some nice graphics and things, so, you know, we know people are still gonna probably go door-to-door trick-or-treating as well, but there's, there's some small comments and things you can do to cut the risk down. So, just wanted you to be aware of that and kind of what the discussion is, and if you have any feedback or guidance. Basically, without Arcalala, this is kind of all that we have going on that week. Um, but the Chamber, I think, is slowly sort of stepping up to coordinate it. They didn't originate with them, but they're kind of getting involved in it. The other thing I wanted to bring up is, you all, those of you who are going to the conference should have received an email in the last couple of days with this as an attachment. Um, and I haven't even read through all this yet either, but I will, so if you have questions, I can hopefully help. But there's, it's an entire guide to how to access the app that you're gonna need to get into the conference virtual sessions. Um, you can download it from either the Apple Store or the Google Play Store, and I think there's, um, yeah. You don't have to have a Zoom account, which is nice, but you basically have to log into the app.
You can either do it through your app or through a mobile or website, like laptop or something.
So once you're logged in and set up with that, you'll be able to go in at any time and view those sessions. You don't have to watch them live. Um, but the schedule is also in this document, if you do wanna watch them live. The only thing, as I said in the email, that you need to probably plan on is if you're one of the voting delegates, please do try to attend that Friday morning meeting. The business meeting at nine thirty to ten thirty on Friday, October sixteenth. And then...
Is that the one we're required at, right?
Yeah, that's the one to actually vote on the, uh, changes in the platform. And then, you know, we'll have our work session right after that. Any questions about that? Let me know if you have any issues, though, because this is a learning experience for everyone, including at the league, and I, I'm sure there'll be bugs in the process.
Uh, on the, uh, trick-or-treat downtown, the thirty-first, there's places that have, um, like, our church has a trunk-or-treat, and I saw those guidelines in the back. Uh, do we have to get, uh, tell the Chamber?
Right. I asked Pam to provide this information. She knew of several churches that were doing those events, and I asked her to get that to them. You know, I would just recommend anyone organizing anything, if you have any questions, contact Tom Langer and run your plans by him. I mean, in general, outdoor is better, obviously. Um, you know, spacing out as much as you can is always the best practice. Uh, but there's, I mean, there's no restrictions in place right now that prevent you from having them at the county level anyway, so... Uh, we just want everyone to do it as safely as possible. We don't wanna see any outbreaks from it. There's also some planning for the Veterans Day Parade, which is gonna be Saturday, November fourteenth. They haven't finalized that yet, but we're looking at similar types of considerations. And Pam's gotten very involved with that, trying to make it a bit bigger than it's been the past years, which would be nice, because we don't have an Arcalala parade, obviously, so we're gonna see if maybe the band can do something. All right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So, um, this is Kathy's last meeting as a city official. Um, so she may be back as a citizen in one of these days, but, uh, I wanna thank her again for her service. And, uh, also remind you guys that there'll be a reception for her this Thursday, uh, from one to three, so, uh, make sure you stop by.
I'd like to thank Kathy for all her service for the last five, six years, seven?
Eight.
Eight? Right in half years. I know you've had some trying times, and we appreciate all that you have done.
Extremely trying times, so, thank you.
And all the hard work you've put into, uh, getting us, uh, the better interest rates that we are going to enjoy. And, uh, wish you good luck. Happy retirement.
Helping us understand.
Pictures are good.
Yes, they...
Oh, you wanna stand up and just take your picture?
No, no, no. Karen knows what I mean.
Is there anything fall cleanup, I noticed, was here.
Yeah, so, uh, also this, um, tomorrow, actually, uh, from, uh, ten to six, we have the, uh, drive-through, uh, flu shot clinic over at the, uh, Agribusiness Building, so, um, we set...
So who's putting that on the?
That's the county health.
County health.
Make sure you take advantage of that.
Is it free?
No, um, I think you have to...
Twenty bucks?
I'm not sure, you, share your insurance, file some paperwork, and, and, um...
Yeah, like with our insurance, city stations are covered, so it doesn't cost our employees anything, but it'll depend on your own coverage.
Same as yours. I just pay a lot of money.
Your own Medicare? It's free, in white.
And Andrew covered the municipality, uh, Conference coming up. Um, then we have a study session, um, at noon on the sixteenth. And then there is a fall cleanup day, um, October seventeenth or May noon. And then the citywide pickup week is October nineteenth into the tenth of the...
Fall cleanup day, is that gonna encompass you sending people out from Wilson Parker gathering there?
Well, we didn't really wanna have people gather, obviously, so what we're asking is if you have a group of people and you want to go out and do something, and you just need to know where, let us know, and we can match you up with properties. I mean, Brian and Mike have a list, can run along, so, um, I haven't had anyone inquire yet, and I wasn't anticipating a lot of interest, just 'cause people maybe, but, you know, it's outdoors, so it'll work with people. If they need supplies, we'll try to provide those, but I didn't really have anyone gather in one place, you know, spread out. It's just a good idea. I will say that Garrett is going to be, um, set up at Wilson Park though, to pick up the waste. And he's also offering a pickup service, and I'll get that information out too. So the people that don't wanna venture out, he can come get it, and they'll put it basically at their doorstep. And we'll be doing the free on clients, renewal, and there's all these things between the cannibals. So, we, we knew we needed at least to do a, uh, pickup week, 'cause we didn't have one in the spring. We've been getting a lot of calls about it, so, that part I feel good about, whether or not we had a lot of volunteers.
Okay. I'll entertain for a journey.
Oh, wait a minute.
I don't know where Dewayne is tonight. If you wanna go ahead...
I have, I have a question on other business. Well, how are we on the Highland Water Lines? Uh, we've been working on that for a while.
Yeah, it's still in design. He's about eighty percent on design.
Is he? Okay.
We're looking at, how we let the contract, you know, November, December timeframe start from January, so...
Okay. I, I don't know if it's on Facebook or whatever. I've heard some complaints about the water up there, that area, so...
Yeah.
Just kinda wondering where we were.
No, it's still under design.
Been working on it a long time.
Uh-huh.
So...
And we're kinda sidetracking with Summit Street.
So, okay.
We're looking at, at replacing the four-inch lines with six and eight-inch lines, which will, uh, with the six-inch, will be good for fire protection, with the six-inch fire hydrants and that.
Okay.
Plus, we have the North Booster Station in Design Two.
In on that?
Which will tie into that too, so...
Okay. All right. Thank you. Now, Mayor?
Oh, you're talking to me?
Yes.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.